Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 13 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone who's in the room and those at home. The first item we're going to be talking about tonight is the Eugene Counts Dashboard. And I know that our staff and the city manager will talk about this, but this is, I think, a really important thing for this council because what we've been trying to put in place is something where we see how we are doing on our goals and it's transparent to the public what the goals are and how we're moving toward them and we're able to show some accountability for what we're trying to do. So we're looking forward to this tonight. I'll turn it over to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a couple of quick comments, just to echo a little bit about what the mayor talked about. We have been developing this Eugene Counts framework and actually, as you know, through our budget discussions and other places, we are using Eugene Counts, the information coming out of Eugene Counts. And so from an organizational perspective, we're very much trying to align and organizationally and financially behind the goals that all of you have set out in Eugene Counts. And so part of what we're here today is the ongoing discussion of how we're actually putting that information out into the community, we'll put out into the community. So particularly those items that are the top 12 or 15 kinds of things, the dials that we want to monitor particularly, it's an opportunity for people to follow that. And then as we have budget discussions into the future and other discussions, we can tie strategies back to these more clearly and talk about, here's the strategies that we're employing to move the dials, how we're doing with that, and then be able to continually evaluate and make adjustments as we go. So it's a great tool. Terry Monroe, as you know, has been leading the charge for us, doing a great job not only on the early end of getting all the information together, but on this part of it is actually putting it out. So, Terry.
Well, thank you. It's nice to be back here. We've gone a few places since I was last here to talk to you. So what I'm going to do tonight is briefly review how we got here and then talk to you a little bit about what went into the dashboard. And then we're going to give you an opportunity to take a look at it and see some of the big features of it. So here's where we are in the cycle. We started up here. And so now we're at the point where we're ready to report results. And I'll take you back through the process just a little bit. It's been a while. So we went out and we talked to the community and we asked people what they would like to see under each of the five council goals, what concrete results they would like for Eugene. And we tried to do this in a way where we heard from a broad segment of the community. We tried to get good geographic representation. And we tried to hear from people who don't always get heard, people maybe who don't come and testify at council meetings and haven't gotten as involved. We wanted to make it as comfortable as possible. So we tried a few different techniques that might make it easier for people to do it. So we did online surveys and in-person surveys. We embedded Eugene Counts content into existing groupings and meetings. We did outreach at some of the typical places like the Eugene Celebration stuff. But we also did some atypical locations, like say Duck Game tailgate party. And so what we found was that everyone who participated found a way to do it that fit into their own comfort level. So we had a couple of versions of the online survey, for example. One of them was a big commitment. It was all five goals. It took a long, long time. Some people very enthusiastically embraced that and are looking for more spaces to talk. So why not more open-ended questions? And then other people wanted a quicker way to engage, so they used a shorter version and focused in on one council goal. We tried to make it so that people could customize it to what would be comfortable and most interesting to them. And we got to hear from a thousand people who gave us-
What do the red dots mean on that other sheet?
Those, okay. So the people are the areas where people did the online survey, so the parts of town. And then when we saw some gaps in the returns that we were getting, we did some outreach in places to try to create, so at group events in other areas to try to get a little more broad representation. You can't do it perfectly, but you can try to make it easier for people to get involved, even if they haven't already jumped at the opportunity.
Can we see that slide again for a second?
Sure, I think. There we go.
So the red dots mean?
The red dots are targeted outreach.
Okay.
To sort of supplement. And the little people are the returns on the online survey.
So Eugene seems to count more in South Eugene.
Or at least participates more.
Some people have made that claim. And so that's why we did try to reach other parts of the community too, so that people would have a chance. And so what we are trying to do is get definition. The five council goals are all incredibly important things, but it can be not always completely clear what you should focus on under each of those. And so we are trying to get some guidance from the community about what things they would most want us to focus on. And so, for example, under Safe Community, we heard things from people like, "I want to feel safe. I want to see and know police officers. I want less crime. I really want less property crime. I want people to stay locked up if they've done bad things." People talked a lot about downtown and they talked about wanting to feel safe there and talked about thinking that they probably would feel safer there if there were more things going on downtown that would bring people there. People talked a lot about the comfort that you get from seeing other people walking around. So that information, you all had access to and you used it to, oh, sorry. This is a little too sensitive, to develop your outcomes under that. And with each of the council goals, you did that. You looked at the data and then you developed a set of outcomes that adhered really closely to what the community had asked for. Though you were using multiple sources of information, you were using the Eugene Counts public engagement, but you were also using others. The Neighborhood Survey had just happened and the Community Survey. And there are a number of pretty engagement-rich public processes. And so the discussions were really interesting. I mean, I remember finding them very rich and textured and I think you came out of it with great outcomes. So we started with the council goals. We got the input. You develop the outcomes. From there, we went to the developing measures. And we put together teams of staff with expertise in areas related to each of the council goals. So we had five teams. We also had some help from our council subcommittee. And we put together a set of measures for each of the outcomes. And it wasn't meant to be comprehensive, measuring everything you could possibly measure under those, because what we want this to be is something that you can look at and know pretty quickly how we're doing in some of those key areas, not look at and spend many, many hours and then know everything you could possibly know about the topic. So we are trying to keep the list small. We are trying to also be very cognizant of the fact that the audience for this is members of the community. It's not people who do a particular job in a particular discipline for a living. So we tried to avoid jargon or things that would be most meaningful to people who do that job and really try to think about what would be useful and interesting and valuable for community members to know. So from there, the tricky part is turning those measures into hands-on, interactive features. We could have stopped at the measures and put out a report with kind of flat charts and graphs in a big, thick binder and put it on a shelf and said, "Okay, we're measuring this." But that doesn't really feel accessible, even if you put it on the web. It's not something that most people will engage with very much. And so, yes, it's there, but it's not that useful to people. So what we were trying to do is make the information something that people could interact with and customize to what they most want to know about in Eugene and maybe colorful and interesting enough that they would want to look at it and linger for a while. And so building the hands-on features, put a whole bunch of those together and create some context for it, and you have the dashboard, which is what you're going to be looking at today. So, just a sec. I want to talk to you about a few of the goals that we had for the dashboard, what we wanted it to, the experience of using it to be for community members. So first and foremost, we wanted it to be honest. We wanted to share information about our performance in pursuit of those outcomes in a way that is transparent, clear, honest, will tell you the bad news. If some things aren't working out, we'll let you know and we'll be doing it really clearly. And that was the biggest driver. We also wanted it to be welcoming. When you talk about performance data, there are a few of us who kind of think that's fun. But for most people, that's not something that they seek out in their leisure time and stuff. So we are trying to make this welcoming and non-threatening and really just invite them in for a conversation about our performance. So we wanted it to be interactive because, well, that's more fun than just looking at a flat chart. We want it to be useful, because you can put together lots of pretty displays of data, but if people can't look at it and find out things that will really help them understand whether they're getting what they want to get for their community, it's probably not worth doing. Wanted it to be very visual, because, once again, there are some of us who like looking at big rows of numbers and find that entertaining. But for most of us, it can be easier to process information visually and really get your hands around it that way. We wanted, as much as we could, to make the information we are providing customizable, something that people could really localize so that they could, for example, look at what's happening in their own neighborhood or look at what the state of affairs is for people who are somehow like, really wanting to just allow people to drill down to whatever their level of interest is and, once again, making it theirs. And we want it to be flexible. This is something that goes hand-in-hand over time with your goals and your council goals and outcomes that you have under those and the things you're choosing to focus on. Those remain flexible because you want to be responsive to changing needs in the community. You want to be able to see what you're already getting done and then what emerging things that you want to really attack. And so we designed this so that it could do that along with you, so that we're not reinventing the wheel every time you respond to changes in our community. So we're going to have a demonstration, but I also encourage you, after the meeting, to go and play, because watching it on the screen, I think it's looking really nice and it's fun. But the real fun in this is to get in and play with the measures and see what you can do with them. Some of them are, you can play. And you can really focus on the things that are most interesting to you. So that's how you will be able to get to it.
Where does it show up on our website?
It will. Oh, and I'll tell you a little bit about the, we'll have a button on the front page for a while where we kind of highlight the things that are new so that people have an opportunity to stumble on it if they don't already know about it. This phase right now, we're calling sort of a soft launch, because what we want to do is allow the, allow community members to really get in, use it, play with it, and give us feedback. And we have some things that you'll see that are built into it that will help us to get information from people as they're using it in the next couple of months. And we're going to use that information to make improvements to it and really refine it so that it becomes even, becomes as useful as it can be for people. And some of those things, we'll be able to take that information in real time and make quick fixes, because they'll, you know, someone will give a piece of feedback and it's like, "Oh, of course. That would have been so much easier to understand if we'd just put a note there or labeled it differently." Other things that are more substantive changes, like a person or two saying, "This measure is absolutely useless. It gives me nothing." We wouldn't necessarily rush to change it until you have enough sort of corroborating information to let you know that it's a good idea to make that change. But we will really be doing close review of it over the next couple of months so that we can make it work as well as we can for the community. So we'll do kind of soft promotion, the social network stuff, so that we can really get, and using communication to our neighborhood groups, things like that, so that we can get a critical mass of people to really go in and use it and play with it, so that we'll get useful and valuable feedback to use. So I think I'm going to ask the rest of our team to come up and show the way around. So we have Jeff Oswald and Scott Christian, who are going to navigate. And I'm going to move to the-
So I noticed at least one of you is already looking at it, skipping ahead a little bit in the presentation, but that's okay. So what we're going to show, this is the starting page. I'm going to walk you through a few of the things that make it more than just charts and graphs and dials. So when people land here, starting from the top, a little bit of information and they'll be able to dive into more information. This is information pretty much from the presentation that you've already seen. We've got each of the five council goals represented here. And then the outcomes all here, so this is all on the front page. There's also a process we go through on each of the goals to determine what the weather looks like, what are the current conditions. So we have sunny, a partly cloudy, a cloudy over here, and a rainy. As you can see, the Y's underline here, so we can click on this and it will tell you why it's currently sunny and it'll give you some of the things that we're doing and whether or not we're being successful or not. Throughout the dashboard, you'll see a common feature, and this is common, you might find on other websites. You can click on the main logo here and it'll take you back to the front. So if you ever get lost, that's the first place you go. If you go into a specific goal, and I'm just choosing this one as an example, the goal name is at the top. We keep the outcomes front and center. Here are the various, here's where you navigate into the various performance measures, followed by some narrative that we hid or we tucked away a little bit so that the page that you land on wasn't too text-heavy. So how to get around, how to use the data, why focus on these particular measures, and also strategies and things we're doing to make progress towards achieving this particular goal. All these, and this one especially is customized for the goal that you're looking at. There's also a feature article that will rotate periodically up here in the corner, specifically oriented towards one of the outcomes. And finally, on the goal page, we have feedback. So people can come in and answer two simple questions and then free form to put in what they'd like to do, what they'd like to say. I'm going to navigate into one of the measures here, just to show you a few more features on the specific measures. My coworker, Scott, will talk about this particular measure. But again, we keep the goal name at the top, the outcomes at the top. There's another button for feedback on this particular measure. And all the feedback that we track, we're tracking where they're coming from. So we know when they say, "Was this measure easy to understand?", we'll know what measure they were on when they clicked this button. And eventually, I'll get my mouse back. And if you say no, we'll ask you why. And finally, a Facebook recommend button. I don't know if you'd, we chose recommend instead of like, because I don't think you'd really want to like the number of property crimes per year, per neighborhood. And on the measure pages, you can click on the goal to get back to the goal page. And again, from anywhere, you can click on the Eugene Counts logo to get back to the main page. So that covers some of the stuff around it that makes it more than just the charts and dials. Scott is going to talk about some of the specific measures and some of the features.
All right, so let's take a look at some of these measures and see what they actually look like, as soon as I can.
Keep moving.
So let's take a look at annual property crimes. So here we have a view of the annual property crimes in a hypothetical average neighborhood is what we're looking at currently. And you can go in and personalize this. On the right side, we have a list of all the neighborhoods. And when you click on one of these, like say Calhoun neighborhood, it gets added to the graph. So we can compare your neighborhood with a hypothetical average neighborhood with another neighborhood. So River Road Community Organization. So we can add all these. We can also look at person crimes, property crimes, or societal crimes. So we want to see these three on their person crime stats, societal crime. So we can do that. We can also look at wards instead of neighborhood associations. So we can see the average ward, and then we can go through and add the wards we want to look at, say Ward 2, Ward 5. So we have that option. And we also have monthly crime stats. So here we can see the average neighborhood, the monthly crime stats for currently, it's set on 2009. We have stats from 2008 up until 2011 in March. So, and we can go through again and we can add the neighborhoods that were interested, like say maybe Amazon and Churchill. We can also do the same for Ward. And we can also look at downtown just by itself and citywide crime stats. So our next measure, let's take a look at boards and commissions. We have some demographic data.
Yeah, it's the flash.
Do you want to take a look at that? We can see the community, the applicants and the appointees, broken down by race, ethnicity, by ward and gender. So it's a little hard to see from the projector because the colors aren't reproduced as accurately. But you can highlight, say Hispanic or Latino, and you can get the numbers for that. So you can drill down and see which ones you're interested in. So up here, we can go look at these same numbers by gender, male or female.
You do ward?
Yes, we have wards too. So there's also another category for people that aren't actual residents in the city. So if you're in Springfield or still within the Eugene growth boundary but not actually in New York. So we can also see the individual boards and commissions, broken down by ethnicity, gender, and ward. So these detail tabs are. So if we want to look at a specific board or commission and see what its makeup is by ward, we can do that. So here we get a list of all the boards and commissions, and we can see all the wards that make them up, all the people in the wards. So if we want to look at, say, just Budget and Human Rights Commission, so we can have those. And you can see all the people in Ward 4, one in each. We can do the same thing by ethnicity and gender. And we also have the terms and membership of all the people. So you can see their name, term length, their term-end date, and what board or commission they belong to. And you can drill down specifically if you just want to see who's on, you know, the Budget Committee or Historical Review Board. Our last measure, we can go through and look at a percentage of streets needing repair. Here we can see the number of streets that do need repair, and we can see the major events and what effect they had on that percentage. Gas taxes, bond measures, when the bond measure ends, and our current and projected numbers from 2001 to 2020. Right now, we're looking at all improved streets. We can also look at residential, we get a definition of what a residential street is, collector and arterials. And we also have maps, so that you can click on a street and see who maintains it. We can also get a list of the current road projects that are ongoing. So if you need to get more information about the construction on Coburg or wherever, we have those listed. So let's look up an address and we can see who maintains it. Go and look up Delta, North Delta Highway. See, that's maintained by, at least this section that's highlighted is maintained by Lane County. You can also click on a street. So here's a major collector maintained by the city.
Pretty awesome.
Well done.
Yeah. Except for the stretches.
Sort of that little video that- Yeah, I think we want to explain it. So we also have a video on our main front page. It's going to help explain how to navigate around. It'll show you pictures of people asking questions, what they want to know about, and it'll help lead them to the right goal page, so that they can find the information that's really applicable to what they're interested in.
So we'd like to just open it up now for any questions that you have. Comments?
Could I look at the sustainable development one?
And the green is actually much prettier in real life than what displays on the projector. And I do, Jeff just reminded me, I did want to point out, because we have some iPad users here, there's one issue with one of the tools that we're using. And we're aware of it. And there's supposed to be a fix in July, right?
So we're told.
Yeah, so the-
Bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one.
Bigger and bigger or the spiral. So we really want it to be usable on that, but that, somewhat- So we really want it to be usable on that, but that, a certain of our measures, there's a particular vendor who's still working out that issue.
Can't create new things without a bug or two. It's still cool.
Before I call in other folks, I just want to ask about this one, because I can see the economic part of it, I can see the social equity part of it, I don't see the other part. The natural resource protection, I don't see the indication of the old triple bottom line.
Right, the, because the outcome about the decision-making that weighs economic, social equity and...
Right, right. I would think that that would, you know, that's a place where you might see your climate and energy plan or something else around that work.
And, and there will, and that's one of the things that's, that's interesting about this. So we have a handful of measures that we're measuring, and then we also have other ways that we're going to be looking at and tracking information. So to have a single measure that, say, measures the Climate and Energy Action Plan, you couldn't do it.
You might not do that, but I'm, I would say that I would be very fearful.
Right.
That if people looked at this and you said you were using a triple bottom line lens and they saw two parts of the lens and not the third, that they would think that that didn't matter to us.
Right, right.
It's just my, my reflection on that. Okay, other questions, comments? This is very impressive, by the way, it's very impressive. Yes, George?
Yeah, it's very impressive, I agree. I can hardly wait to get home and start playing around with them. I just have a couple of questions about, I suppose, about the response and the outreach. You said you got about a thousand responses online?
Um, the combination of the...
Or is that total?
Yeah, the combination of online and the other interactions. So some of the...
And that included the ones where you went out to the neighborhoods and to sites?
Right.
And those people filled out surveys?
Right, filled out surveys or participated in group sessions or, so there were, there were a number of different modes.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Others?
That's good. Nice work, very nice.
I have to tell you, I, this fabulous team, Scott and Jeff have done amazing things for this.
I didn't actually, I have to say, I didn't expect anything quite this sophisticated. It is really, really very cool, and the range of things you can do with it, and the range of information you can get, and the specificity is really impressive, and shows a lot of really, really, really good...
And useful.
Yes, Pam?
I'd just like to concur or agree. That really is beyond my expectations. Very nicely done. I do have questions which I want to ask around the table regarding how do we account for so many people and the concentration of the responses being from a certain area? Why, how do we account for that? And what can we do to make sure that's more homogenized throughout the community? No answers today.
One of the things, I think it will be important as you go through it, if you do have comments on any of the data, please submit them to us, whether it's on the what do you think, or just send us information. That will be helpful just as we continue to go forward.
Patty, question. Why is multifamily housing, how is that related to sustainability?
Um, because...
The location of it, that is.
In part because it's, it's pretty closely correlated to with compact, and so near the center so that it's walkable and, and people can access work and, and other resources.
I can click on one.
And part of it is it uses less land for a number of people, more density. And that was something that people talked about a lot in the outreach.
Well, they're there. I can click on them, it goes there, but they're not sure.
Anybody else? All right, well, I think we're kind of overwhelmed with how cool it is.
Well, and please, when you play, if you see things, if you, if there's something that you have a question about or that concerns you, definitely let us know, because we're really looking at the next couple of months as a way of taking this, this new thing and honing it and refining it so it will be, will be even better.
I think you've really honed in on a lot of the things people would be wanting to look at, from the roads issue to the public safety. I mean, I see that all the things that we've talked around the table there with my little bit of discomfort about maybe a little something that shows a piece that we work on the other, the third part of the triple bottom line, but other than that, and I can see that reflected actually in your, in your conversation about multifamily housing, which is part of that too. So it's probably just a way of looking at it, but it wasn't clear to me on the surface. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Very cool, very cool. Appreciate it. All right, so I guess we're ready to move on. Wow. Can't wait to actually go home and play with them.
Yeah, there's a lot there once you start moving around in it.
Well, I actually think it's a really wonderful tool for putting in play what we asked for, so it's, it's great. Homeless car camping is next. Again, another issue that we've been working on in many ways over a long period of time. The car camping is only one facet of the huge homeless issue that we are all deal with in one way or another in our parts of the, of the community, so. Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Pete to introduce the topic, and then I know there are a couple of others that will be making presentations.
And you're right, we'll just be presenting on this very narrow subject of on-street camping or car camping, in the car camping program. I used to manage this when I was a, or I was the police representative when I was a lieutenant. And what we have today is very similar to the program that we had then. It's been moving along smoothly for many years, and for the most part, functions very well. I ask that we be permitted to present on this for you today because we saw in the first quarter of this year a pretty rapid increase in the number of complaints about homeless camping that we receive in our 911 center. And I knew that if we're hearing those complaints, some of you probably are too, and I thought it would be helpful for you to know how we handle all this. And over the course of the last four or five months, we've been continuously, our staff have been continuously making adjustments, and we have some plans for the future about how we'll continue to evolve this particular program. So I'll step away. I'd like to introduce Michael Wist from Planning and Development, who's made a very quick study of this whole thing. He's fairly new to the city and, but a very articulate presenter. And Pete, Lieutenant Pete Deschondé would normally be doing this with, with him, but he can't be here today, so Sergeant Carl Stubbs is here. And I'm really appreciative of Carl doing this because he's working graveyard and only had a few hours of sleep and is back here to do what's to many people kind of a nervous presentation to council, but I know Carl will do a great job.
No pressure, though.
Really?
And Pete, it's big time.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, then we're just going to say welcome. Sergeant.
How are you?
I'm not sure if people...
Well, I was just going to... But first, let me say hello and good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Michael Wist. I'm a community programs analyst with Community Development. And with me tonight is Sergeant Carl Stubbs, as he was just introduced with the Eugene Police Department. And with us tonight in the audience is William Wise of St. Vincent de Paul, who we may need to lean on in the event some questions come up. We're here to give an overview and update of Eugene's homeless car camping program. So we can jump right in. To begin, there are two specific codes which influence the overnight car camping program. These include Code 4.815, which prohibits camping within the city in general, but then there's also 4.816, which allows for car vehicle camping that meets certain criteria. On the screen above, you can see some of the criteria. With permission of the owners in public and private parking lots, they can host up to no more than three vehicles. On residential, single-family lots, families or residents on single-family lots can host up to one family. The caveat for both of those allowances is that sanitation services must be provided, so that includes both trash removal and restroom facilities. To manage both the on-street, off-street elements of the camping code, the city established a homeless car camping program. Since 1998, the program has managed overnight car camping issues using a two-pronged approach of proactive and responsive measures to address the diverse issues involved. Proactive measures of the program includes a management of public and private overnight parking sites. This often includes coordinating sanitary facility for sites, screening campers for suitability between them and sites, and marketing the program to interested property owners. Responsive measures include internal and community coordination and enforcement of on-street camping regulations. Enforcement is initiated by complaint from residents and business owners and is therefore inherently responsive to the needs of the community. I'll be discussing both the management of public and private overnight parking sites and coordination efforts behind these as well, before turning it over to Sergeant Stubbs to discuss the enforcement of overnight car camping regulations. As mentioned, the city contracts with St. Vincent de Paul to manage both elements of the program, whose car camping coordinator manages both the provided camping sites as well as serving as a first responder to on-street camping complaints.
How do I go back?
Can't go back.
Oh, okay. Speed it up. There we go. Okay. On the screen above, giving a sample of some of the managed sites. As a manager of the overnight sites, St. Vincent's car camping coordinator screens those interested in acquiring a site. These pictures are a sample of some of the campsites around the city. Campers are expected to maintain their sites, and as you can see, they're pretty well-maintained. They can have both trash and restroom facilities. They are kind of a, there's a natural incentive to maintain the site because that is a reason you can lose a site for not maintaining it. So in my experience going around the city and documenting some of these sites, they have all, you know, been well-maintained and compact and relatively nondescript. And as a result, the management of the overnight spaces generates few, if any, complaints. To further give an understanding of the sites across the city, these represent some of the eight family sites. These are most often hosted, I think seven of them are hosted now in church parking lots throughout the city. You can see there, there's not many, but they're pretty evenly spread throughout the Moving on to our individual sites, these are most often in public and private parking lots, business owners, churches again. Also well-spread to the northern stretches of the city, but very few. We cropped off South Eugene there, there aren't really any down there at the moment. But there are 23 of these sites. So as the program is currently managed, we have 31 total sites, serving 63 people, and the current waiting list for site requests is 83. And these numbers tend to fluctuate throughout the year. Some sites are seasonal, some sites go out of commission, some come on as development occurs. So therefore, the number of people served also fluctuates. Meanwhile, the waiting list is usually between low 80s to mid to high 90s.
And that's the number of sites and not people?
Right, that's just the number of requests for a site, is not taking into consideration the number of people per request. As mentioned earlier, Eugene City Code 4.815 prohibits camping throughout the city. Defines camping as any place for the purpose of bedding or where a stove or fire is placed. So for the purpose of bedding, that would include overnight camping, and explicitly points out, prohibits right-of-way's parks, streets, and alleys. So the diversity and uniqueness of the issues involved with illegal on-street camping often involve numerous departments across the city. And to, to assist with a response to these, to these issues, better strategize efforts related to homeless car camping in Eugene, an interdepartmental committee has reconvened. This committee incorporates key staff whose work intersects with homeless car camping issues. From Planning and Development, we have Community Development, Zoning and Nuisance, and Parking Services Representation. From the Police Department, we have Communications and Patrol. We have St. Vincent de Paul, thankfully. From Central Services, we have CMO, Neighborhood Services, Public Service Officer, Equity and Human Rights, as well as Public Works and Maintenance. Each of these departments plays a critical role in the functioning of the program. Through this coordination, the program more efficiently guides outside inquiries and complaints to the correct staff and the most knowledgeable staff, creates policies and procedures for the continued improvement of the program, and makes effective use of existing city And as a complement to this, you know, often in these interdepartmental discussions or committee meetings, we stumble across hotspots throughout the community and very concerned citizens who do not like what they're seeing outside of their home or their business. You know, hotspots are areas of, you know, concentration or camping-related complaints. So to better address hotspots, we are working to, with community members and appropriate city staff to address specific signage and enforcement requests in a collaborative way with residents who, who are experiencing these issues. These efforts incorporate resident and business owner input to develop a reasonable solution to specific camping issues directly affecting them, most often at the block or street level. And that concludes my piece. I'll turn it over to Sergeant Stubbs.
Good evening to the council and those in attendance. So basically, to begin our part, is we have a program with St. Vincent de Paul where we work in conjunction to address the problems, the camping problems in the city. If a person in the community has a complaint, they would then call into the communications, communications would then log that and send, ensure that it's sent over to St. Vincent de Paul. There's a designated person over at St. Vincent de Paul that will go out and contact the individuals in that particular area and give them an opportunity to move. They have 24, he'll give them a 24-hour notice, let them know that they have to vacate the prop, or the area where they are, or enforcement would happen at that point. And we, we don't want him to put himself in harm's way, so if there are, if they engage him or if they're combative in any way, then we request that he backs off and just allow the EPD to handle it, the response at that time. If they do not move, they go on what is called a willful violators list. And basically, that list goes out to what we had as a willful violator team, consisted about four or five officers, who would during their unobligated call time, go out and if the vehicle is still in that area and they, they're on the list, we know that they are violator, then we would then cite and tow the vehicle, and cite the person and tow the vehicle. Recently, because of the numbers, and we're going to talk a little bit about the numbers here in a little bit, because of the spike that we've recently seen, we have kind of changed that procedure. It was a lot of work for just a few number of officers to engage in as far as going out and taking care of this, while they had to also do, answer other calls for service within the city. So we're still going to maintain the log, but what will happen is it will then go out to all the officers who are working on patrol and that way, and it'll go as far as calls for service so that officers can then go out and enforce that captain statute. Excellent, just hit it. So what you're seeing here is basically the calls for services tracked by the computer, our CAT system. It's basically, these are the people who are calling in to complain about on-street camping. One of the reasons why that we felt there was a need to address it and talk to you about it is you'll see over the course of the years, this is the whole year 2006, '07, and '08, at 2011, this is just the first quarter. So it's quite a jump in the number of complaints of people calling in to complain about on-street camping. So there is definitely a concern there. This is another breakdown of the complaints by quarter, so you kind of get an idea of the spike that we've been witnessing in the calls for service. Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that there's, each of these 359 folks are individuals, it could be the same person calling in numerous times about a complaint, but it's still a concern in the community. So what you're seeing here is basically a map of enforcement in the city of Eugene. Basically, for police purposes, we kind of break down the city into six districts, and District 1 being the Coburg Road area, 2 being the central area downtown, 3 is the university southeast Eugene area, 4 being the southwest Eugene area, and 5 being the Bethel area, and 6 being the River Road area. Basically, the red dots indicate where the bulk of our enforcement has been happening, and this is from 2010 calls for service. So you'll see that... So, you'll see that it's generally focused in the southwest, some in the southeast, and then in the Bethel area as well. These are generally the places where people are going, they're camping on the street. And a lot of times when people are camping on the street in places they're not supposed to be, we'll see an increase of littering in those areas and also some disputes as So, this is our citation trend. You'll see we had a spike in 2008. In Quarter 1, we have already written 11 citations. And again, that's just with a small group of officers who have to... Who were trying to fit the response within their call load. So, basically, when the city had died down and there weren't a lot of calls for service, they were during that time, unobligated time, expected to go out and either cite or tow those who were on the violators' list. Basically, this equates to in 2006, three arrests and 48 cite-in-lie-of-custody CLCs, which basically means it could be a custody, but they're given a citation to appear in court later. 2007, seven arrests and 59 CLCs. 2008 is four arrests and 105 CLCs, and we're not exactly sure why that particular spike during 2008. And in 2009, there was six arrests, 59 CLCs. 2010, it was one arrest and 59 CLCs, and in 2011, four arrests and seven CLCs.
Okay. And going forward from this moment, we've touched on a lot of these, but we feel that they're important to the furthering of this program. As Sergeant Stubbs just talked about, there's been modifications to enforcement procedures regarding illegal on-street camping. I've also personally been in touch with a number of concerned neighbors regarding our community solutions and trying to organize key staff from different departments to address them and their specific issues regarding parking signs, illegal dumping outside of their properties, and realizing that sometimes you need a longer-term solution than just getting that van away from the property and really creating some change along that street to, you know, create a negative incentive for future campers. Once again, we are working very seriously to create stronger interdepartmental coordination regarding these issues. And I know police dispatch has been taking on more training, so when they get calls in, they're more versed in the car camping code so they can more adequately address resident concerns. So, following that, this is just my contact information and Lieutenant Dishfondes, and I believe now we can be opening this up for questions.
Got George and Pat and Andrea and Alan. One thing that you didn't clarify in your comments, the car camping sites have a length of time usually that people can stay in those sites, right?
That is not so.
No, there's no length of time. It's just for as long as the people will let them stay there. I thought it used to be six...
It is three months.
That's what I thought.
But it rolls over.
It is three months.
Okay. I've seen on our reports some people who have been there for longer than three months.
I thought there was...
Now, there's several people, excuse me, who have...
William, do you want to come up here?
Yeah, grab a chair.
By and large, is this working?
Yes.
William Wise, Director of First Place Families, St. Vincent de Paul. And my first three years with St. Vincent's, I was the person doing all the police response and the program, and I still am the person that people who are particularly angry get to call. And so, I'm still quite involved in it. And Keith Heath does the day-to-day work on the calls these days. He does an awesome job of that. The general target is that we put people on a spot for three months. The exceptions to that are we have several sites that have been completely set aside. For example, one man is a veteran with a chronic illness, and he's really never going to get out of his vehicle. And so, there's a little accommodation for a few people, but overall, it's a three-month cycle, and people who are on the list need to call in or check in with Keith a couple times a week. And actually, those who check in frequently get into a spot within a month or so. Those who don't call in kind of fall off of the list. But there is the time limit on it. What I found when I first took the program in late 2001 was there are people who've been on spots for two or three years, and that was their permanent home as far as they were concerned. And we find that if there's not a deadline to move out, people settle in and don't make efforts to do better. So, that's the status. Again, there may be some, I know, longer-term campers, but that's not what we're supposed to be doing.
So, if it's three months, you're saying that like if you have 85 people waiting, people who keep calling and trying to get in, get in relatively soon?
Yes. What we're looking for is people who make the best use of the spot, and if they're not motivated to check back in, they may be quote "on the list," but they don't get called in. They don't pick up the spots. So, it kind of sorts itself out.
Okay. Thank you.
Since I've got the microphone, I'd like to say one thing just aside. Wonderful presentation. I've been... This is 10 years I've been involved with this program one way or another. The one of the most critical things to make the program work is the cite and tow, and that's one of the problems when there's backlogs. What we find is if a couple of weeks goes by and no one is towed, everyone starts ignoring the regulations. It's the act that people are being towed when they don't behave well and don't follow the rules and move and not make a mess. That makes the program work. And yet, that's the biggest hassle and time-consuming thing to do for an officer. And so, overall, while Keith handles the majority of the calls, we bounce what, two or three a week probably, back to the police department to tow. And the grapevine in there works really, really well, and it just goes to hell really quickly if we're not towing people. So, that is one factor. Thank you.
Thank you. George Pauling?
Well, I certainly understand the need for some of these camping spots, and I appreciate all the hard work that the St. Vincent's folks do, as well as EPD and everybody, and especially the churches and other organizations and property owners that are willing to take these camping spots, open these camping spots up. And what we've been talking about here is the... Basically, the organized off-street camping. What I have a concern is, and there's particularly one person in my ward sent me a photograph of their neighbor who has backed a fifth wheel right up next to their fence, and there's people who've been there for like five or six months living in this fifth wheel. And there's trash piling up, there's constant parties and noises. What is the avenue for this person to address that type of... And it's basically illegal camping. What is the avenue available to people that have problems like this?
Now, are we discussing them parking on someone's property or is it on the street?
No, it's in their... It's in the property.
It's on that person's property?
Backed all the way up to the, you know... And this is just one example, backed all the way up, right up against the neighboring fence, the dividing fence. And this person's at the wit's ends about this problem.
And this is on a single residential property?
Yes.
One of the... That is not really something that's managed by the car camping program. This is something that would go to nuisance and code, and I know it has because I've seen the emails. And given the code as it stands, there's very little that code and nuisance can do with that situation right now, just, you know, how the code is written.
Now, if there are other enforceable things that are happening, such as loud noise, prohibited noise, or other things that happen that are a crime, then they can call EPD and we can respond. But if there's no criminal element, then they have to go through the process that Michael just mentioned.
And the example that you gave, that's... These are... These type of incidents are basically complaint-driven, and then hopefully, we have somebody available a certain amount of time to go do the enforcement action. Same thing with the... With these camping spots that are set up throughout the city. Any complaints about those, I mean, other than the time factor? It's basically complaint-driven again? Is that also true?
Yeah. People are called in, and then once they're on the list, hopefully, most of the people that we contact, when Keith comes out and tells them to move, they'll leave. They'll vacate that area. For those who don't, they then go on the list, and it is complaint-driven. I mean, in the past, we had, like I said, a few number of officers that were addressing the issue, and so, it was kind of a slow-moving process. But we're hoping that with the new procedure that has been implemented, that we'll be able to address some of the more concerns of the community at more expeditions.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a little bit of history on this, and I'm not sure who in the room can actually talk about history. I know Mr. Ford in the back can talk about history quite a bit. The Council Committee on Homelessness is initially where this ordinance came from. Before, may recall the Whittaker area, particularly up around the bridges, were just lined with campers. So, this ordinance really did take a lot... Take care of a lot of people who would rather not illegally camp. Face it, people would rather not illegally camp. They'd rather live someplace where they can feel safe and not feel like they're going to be harassed by either neighbors who don't want them there or by other... By predators, whomever it may be. So, this is kind of the start, I believe, of a long conversation. Sometimes it may be unpleasant, sometimes it may be distasteful, and sometimes, particular instances, we may come across and we say, "This cannot happen." But in reality, we've got an issue here. The people who are camping don't want... Would much rather not be in violation of the law. They'd much rather be camping legally someplace. And if we look at one of the main issues that we have here is the spots on the map where camping is legally allowed. It's churches, it's some businesses, it's some parks. We looked at the Eugene Counts, for instance, and a great deal of participation in South Eugene. We look at homeless camping, zero participation in South Eugene for individuals. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect as to where this is allowed, how we get the word out to allow for legal, safe, and non-intrusive camping for people who are unable, for one reason or another, to afford a permanent residence. And how do we make it more available to people who are in our community, who otherwise may be subject to complaints, subject to citation and towing, where, as we all know, I'll say once again, people don't want that. They would much rather not have that. They don't want to have their... Some neighbor complaining about them, and they don't want to have to move on a day-to-day basis. So, hopefully, Madam Mayor, this is the start of a conversation that we have around this table that begins to address, how do we take care of the people who are maybe being cited, who... There are other things that we can do that are going to solve their personal family issues and give them a legal, safe place to live, which I don't think there's anybody in this room or anybody around who would disagree that everybody should have a safe place to live. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Good comments, Pat. So, I have some... Thank you guys for coming, and I appreciate the chief putting... And you all putting this back on the agenda. I hadn't thought of asking for more. I had actually forwarded some emails that I'd gotten from my constituencies to the staff, hopefully, that I could share it, and I didn't know if any of you all had gotten them. Because I have... If you could put that one picture back up that shows the red dots, if anybody... If you can. But if you looked at the red dots, they're not just in Bethel, they're in mine and Chris's ward, so...
It's in the industrial area.
Yeah. It's in the industrial area, and those are people probably aren't... They're camping in fields and stuff and under the railroad tracks and under the... I mean, under the overpass at Highway 99 and on dead-end streets. You know, it's really harsh living for those folks. I mean, you know, my heart goes out to them, but my heart also goes out to people who, you know, have this outside their front door. Luckily, a lot of those people are in fields and in the industrial area. I know that they don't... They're not affecting neighborhoods, but they're still affecting the business owners, and that's also a challenge. So, I have some questions, I guess. William, there's a waiting list of 83 people who want to participate in the camping. Are there any businesses that you've turned away that could have possibly become sites that, for lack of funds?
Right now, we have some places pending where people expressed interest, but we're going to wait and see how things sort out. In terms of expense, just the raw expense of a site for the porta-potty, the trash pickup, it comes up to something around $1,000 a year per site. This doesn't account for staff time and towing and all the other expenses.
This is what we got. So, we... In our packet attachment A, shows the city puts in $89,000 a year towards the St. Vincent's, puts in 26 and some change. So, for each site, it's approximately $3,500, with $2,300 of it going to management. And that just kind of seems a little...
Well, by management, there's staff, there's Keith, and all of that.
So, I would hope... I talked to the city manager about increasing the number, if possible, how many sites are available, so that when businesses... Additional sites, not sites that are... I mean, more sites. If there's businesses or churches that want to take people on, give them some opportunities. I would like... I would appreciate the funding for that. And I have a question for you, Sergeant. So, the signage that goes up, like if you take Second and... Oh, what street is that? By... On the other side of Jefferson, on this side, there was a lot... There was a church there, and there was a lot of trouble there. And I noticed that a sign finally went up that said, "No overnight camping." Can you tell me, how does one go about getting those signs? Because there's some areas that people really like, like the dead-end streets that all end to the river, that should, you know, that I get a lot of calls from too at different times of the year. Can you tell me how the process somebody would go through to get that sign?
Well, I know we had a... In one of our meetings, we had a... I forgot his name. He came...
Steve Gallup.
Steve Gallup. With which service?
Public Works.
Public Works. He basically is in charge of that particular program. Getting signs up is another process in and of itself that they have to take into consideration the locations where the signs are and if they're feasible for the city. So, it's not something that they generally do for the whole city, but in certain circumstances, they do do those.
Andrew, if you'd send us the locations and we'll take a look.
Well, what I'd like to do, John, is actually have a matrix available for community members to be able to reflect on, and just so it won't seem punitive for somebody who calls and complains. I mean, if there's calls for service and there's obviously a hotspot and a problem for like a dead-end street that leads to a park or the church... I mean, I've gotten a lot of complaints over the years that it's very problematic and it takes a really long time, and I'll take a second round, Mayor.
Alan, you're next.
Very good comments by both Pat and Andrea. I agree with everything you said. It is tough being homeless and it's also tough having it outside in front of your house. Sergeant, when you said you were saying that you get citations in lieu of being... What was it?
Oh, citations in lieu of custody.
Custody, and then there were arrests, and the arrest numbers were substantially smaller. What are we arresting them for compared to... How do you tell which one's which and what's the...
Well, generally, there's some mitigating circumstances that happens when the officer contacts the person. I mean, there was one particular call. I was with our officers, and the person was just very non-compliant, uncooperative with us. So, at that point, we made a decision to arrest him. Instead of writing him a citation, he didn't want to relinquish his camper, although he was a violator numerous times. So, in those cases, then we'll have to take enforcement action. Usually, those don't consist of families, they'll just consist of a single person. And then, the cite-in-lie-of-custody, they are written a citation, are able to come to court in two to three weeks.
What happens to the folks that you arrest?
They are transported to Lane County Jail and lodged there, and then their camper trailer is able to be towed at that point. And then, it's up to the jail as far as when they're processed or when they're matrixed out.
How long they stay? Okay. Great.
Okay. All right. Chris, you're next.
Thanks. I really appreciate the comments that have been sent around the table, and you're right, a lot of it is in our area, and I do get complaints about mostly on-street camping in inappropriate spots. That seems to be the area that's the greatest. Do you have any sort of an idea proportionately for car camping? What proportion? I'm going to start channeling Richie here. Which proportion are situationally homeless as opposed to the chronically homeless? Do you have any sort of a sense of how those break out?
Well, we... I don't believe we have those numbers available now.
Well, we, I don't believe we have those numbers available now.
Maybe William might know.
I think just the simplistic thing is to say that almost all of the families in the family program are situationally homeless, and because of that, they get much more intensive services. Because we're faith communities, they're all drug-tested, background-checked, and do weekly case management. The majority of the folks on the singles are going to be chronically homeless, with, as typically, a high degree of folks with various mental illnesses and other disabilities. The majority of the people on the street or at the service station are never going to be self-supporting unless some major thing happens in the country that changes how we address all these problems. So, they're not going to go away, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at, is in terms of what could be the turnover. If you're dealing with situationally homeless, you could predict, perhaps, people could move through and get on to something better, but if we're dealing with a lot of chronic homelessness here, then you're dealing with a more or less permanent problem that you're just moving around town, which then creates, how do we manage that kind of an issue where, okay, you can't stay here for more than three months, so you have to go here for three months, and then you go here for three months, and it's just shifting the problem around, rather than coming up with something structural. I don't know the degree to which, then, additional supports could really address this, and by that, I think, a lot of people are homeless because they lost their job, or they can't, or medical care drew off all of their money. If you find them a job, they can get into, you know, in other words, you can start them back on, but if they're chronically homeless because of drugs, alcohol, mental illness, you have to deal with that in a whole different way. And so, I'm trying to get a bead on how much of the car camping homelessness problem that we're talking about is more chronic and endemic, something that you're really going to have to just accept it's not easily fixable, or fixable with some other kind of a support. Therefore, we have to come up with a much more structured solution for it, and that's what I'm really kind of stretching for. Yeah?
Just to say, I think you're right, on target, that it's a method of managing a problem. It's a social problem, it's hard to enforce a social problem out of existence, but we have to manage it. There's no way we're going to have enough legal spaces to take care of the problem. It's just not going to happen. But, the legal spaces are the carrot that goes with the stick. And so, the fact that Keith works at a service station, he knows most of these folks, that people know if they're cooperating with the program, they don't make a mess, and they behave, then he will let them have a three-month respite. That's worth a lot. That makes the whole program work better. So, on the one side, we need towing. The other side, we need some spaces for people to aspire toward, and that way, it all works pretty smoothly. People, we advise people, don't stay more than one night in one place, move around the community, don't make a mess, don't bunch the neighbors, you know, don't have a party, just play a low profile, and most of the folks are doing that. Regarding the population, I was director of the service station for a while, I figure a quarter of the third have a chronic untreated mental illness. A huge number of them have physical illnesses and/or very low job skills. Actually, alcohol and drugs are not a big factor in this, although, a lot of the folks with mental illness will self-treat with illegal drugs, self-medicate. It's just this whole substrate of folks that don't have the ability physically, emotionally, or intellectually through education, to pull themselves out. And so, like I say, how do we manage it? We have the spots, we have some towing, most of it works amazingly well. Right now, the city council in Seattle is meeting over the same thing, seeking to implement this program there, a version of what's been implemented in Santa Barbara, in Shasta County. We've had extensive calls with Los Angeles County, working to implement parts of this. So, this is actually a model for the West Coast here, and as well as it works, there's few really angry people we have. It's just, it's not an easily solvable dilemma, but I appreciate that this community here has really pioneered this as a way of dealing with this intractable issue.
One last question I have, Ben. If I recall correctly, you mentioned that you do the enforcement part of this as officers are not assigned to other tasks. In other words, they do it as they find free time to do it, which then leads directly to inconsistent enforcement of citing and towing, you know, and that, since this is a central strategy to being successful and making this work, I guess what I'm thinking is, is there a way where we can figure out how to have a more consistent police action on this kind of an item, so that when you do have the behavior that you don't want, and we can control it, so we can keep the level of bad behavior down? It sounds like that's one of those key areas where we, if we can maybe not wait for officers to have free time to do it, but maybe, I don't know how you do it, I'm not trying to guess how operations should work, but it sounds like it's a key strategy to making this whole program work, and we need to find a way for the police to be able to find more time to be able to do that.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we implemented the, a new way of enforcing this. It was enforced by the few officers who were on the Wolf of Violency Team, but now, we have recently made it so that it'll be added to the call screen as far as for all of patrol to address it. That way, we're hoping for more expedition responses.
Perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, too, for the presentation. That was very informative. This is a significant problem that seems like it's getting to be more of one that we should be looking at and doing a better job of dealing with. I know that several people spoke to this during our budgeting process here. Andrea specifically made some suggestions on how we might do some things to be helpful, and I would be very supportive of things that the city might be able to do in a small way to assist more private property owners that would make lands or places that they have available. I think I'd certainly be supportive of us being helpful with that. You mentioned that this, the enforcement mechanism portion of this is predominantly or entirely complaint-driven. You also mentioned that other types of illegal camping in parks, along our rivers, are pretty much all the time illegal camping, there's not... So, I guess my question is, is illegal camping that's done along the rivers and in our parks, is that complaint-driven as well, or do you have a different sort of enforcement mechanism for that?
Well, generally, if there's an obligated time, there, I know of officers that will go out and look at the parks. But, there have been people with Public Works who've called in and said that there are camps in particular areas. We will try to address those problems. Generally, yes, it's complaint-driven.
Do the complaints generally come from city staff who've come across folks that are illegal camping, or do they generally come from other sources?
They can be both. It could be people who are running on a path or bicycling, or those who are city staff working in the parks as well.
I know we typically have a St. Vinnie's response first, along the rivers specifically, and in the parks. Do I have that right? We budgeted towards that a couple of years ago, as I recall.
There was a discussion a couple of years ago about a program that we'd call Safe Parks. In order to do that, but that was never implemented. That never, never, never went anywhere.
I remember us having $150,000 towards that at one time, and then, the discussion of perhaps putting more towards it. Did we, am I hearing you say that we've never had funding for Safe Parks?
To my knowledge, there was no funding for Safe Parks, and it was about six years ago, five years ago, that this issue came up, and there was a whole program worked out around that, but it was never funded.
Okay, thank you.
So, I've got Pat and Andrea in the queue for second round, but I, a couple of things I wanted to bring up, and one is that, and I think we need a whole nother sort of session on the other kind of camping issues, other than car camp. I think it's worth a big conversation, because I think we all have different examples of that happening in our neighborhoods as well. I know I do. And I wanted to, huh? When you mentioned earlier that there were about, when George brought up the camping in the backyard issue, and you said you checked on it, and code prevented doing anything about it, I believe that's what you said.
There's nothing in the code specifically that would address it, it'd be more of a news, that's particular code.
So, my, so, one of the things that I think would be interesting to look at is within, if you, if, in your experience, if you go around dealing with this issue, if there are code changes that you think would help, that would be good for us to know and for it to be sort of proactive from the other side. We can decide to say yes or no, but to move on what you know could improve it. And one of the things that comes to my mind about that one, is it sort of a good neighbor policy or something? Yes, you can do it, but if you do it, you are obligated to have certain kinds of behavior. You can't have the kind of behavior that George is talking about, or you will be violating the code within the code, so to speak. So, that's one way you could deal with it. I also think that we should be more, not just kind of reactive, but more proactive in trying to get more spots. And I think for a long time, we've just kind of been pleasantly okay with the number of spots that we have, but I think we might be able to get more spots if we went out and really let people know, and we're actively trying to tell people that we need more and want more, and are capable, should we be, of helping with some of the sanitary issues around it and stuff like that. And another point I wanted to make is, when you do use signs to say you can't park in a place overnight, my experience is, then, yes, they don't park there, but they park in the next block, or the next block, or wherever. So, you may remove a problem from one area, but then an incident approaching right into the next area. So, it's a limited solution. I don't know how much mediation enters into working some of these things out, so that we don't have to have a legal solution. And then, I wanted to let you guys know that in Corvallis, I think today, they are, someone donated a house or something where they, for wet beds, for people who are still, have addiction issues, and they are in the midst of seeing how that would work out. So, we may be informed and learn from their experience, and it might be helpful to us as a community to figure out how, because I know that's one of the things we've been looking at, housing first. And when we have this conversation, I just, we always have to remind people that it costs less to do that than it does to put people in jail or to use the emergency rooms. So, just wanted to add those things to the conversation. Pat, second round for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quote here. Eugene, Oregon is a city with a reputation of doing something to house the homeless, and of doing its best to extend other kinds of help in the meantime. 1998 was when this first started, when we did some experimentation with first kind of semi-legalizing parking in the industrial area, which was quite a failure, actually. And then, we came up with the legal parking in parking lots. And it, really, at the time, it felt like a quantum leap. People were able to camp in places that they were never able to camp before, and a lot of the issues disappeared in the north of the Whittaker area, as we moved toward the park. So, we did, we took a major leap at that point in time, and it took, explaining the issue to people who, for one reason or another, hadn't recognized it, hadn't noticed it, lived in a different part of town, hadn't seen it, and therefore, like myself, didn't believe it existed. So, a large part of it is just letting people know that it does exist, letting them know that, yes, indeed, we have done something, and we have made a quantum leap in the past, and possibly, is there something that we can do that's going to take it one step further? We're not going to solve it, as Mr. Wise says, it's not going, many of the individuals are chronic, chronically homeless, and it's not going to go away. That's not the case with everybody. And perhaps, as Councilor Clark has suggested, maybe we can do a greater outreach to people who would like to add to the number of sites that are available. I know a church in West Eugene, for instance, that doesn't have anyone in the camping, they would love to have at least one family camping in their parking lot. So, maybe that's one thing that we need to address as a council and as a city staff, is how do we reach out and facilitate allowing people to spend $1,000 of our money, $1,000 of our money to house the families for an entire year? You know, it's a pretty inexpensive way to make your job, I think, a lot easier, certainly a lot, potentially a lot more manageable. So, maybe that's the direction we need to go from this point forward, is how do we facilitate reaching out to more people, to more churches, to more businesses, perhaps to more people in that void of South Eugene that isn't really doing anything at this point in time, to get more sites where we can have people doing what they want to do, live legally, live safely, maybe send their kids to school in the morning, whatever the case may be. So, I would prescribe that, and I would hope that perhaps down the road, we can have a greater discussion as to what can we do without really spending great deal of money. It's a thousand bucks, it's a great deal of return on the investment, I believe, $1,000 a year for disposable, and the trash hall of whatever may occur, so let's talk about that. Thanks.
Okay, Andrea, and then Betty.
Thank you. So, I left off saying that I wanted to see a matrix of a way for community members who have chronic problems with people camping in front, I eat in the Whittaker neighborhood north of Whittaker School, I get, you know, they call 911, and they do not feel like their service, that they are getting a response, and so, I'd like to see that. I don't know if it's, would it be with the Public Works, then, that we would have to work, John?
I'm not sure. I think what I would ask them to do is, with their group, as part of their group, we have the internal coordination, we take that up and figure out how best...
Yeah, I know it's moving the problem from one point to another, Mayor, but I feel like I have to have some sort of resolution for my community. It's constant, it's constant. And then, I'd like to know, why do, why are not, why do we not, I'll get it out.
Start again.
Why we do not allow people to camp in parks? Trainsong is a perfect example, it's a pocket park, it gets vandalized regularly with all kinds of stuff, and the community there wants a camper there. You know, of course, background check and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, why can't we, why can't we initiate that? I mean, is there, what do we need to do to change that? I mean, I think it'd be a perfect place for, I think there's other pocket parks in the community that we could benefit from that. I mean, people are adopting parks in the River Road, Santa Clara area, they're taking care of them. I think that, you know, if the state can do it at the local campgrounds, maybe we should consider that as part of our strategy with our skin in the game, besides our dollars.
Youth Garden in Springfield. If there's a parking lot, they can have a site in a park, as Alton Baker has three campers right now, so it's more of a matter...
Logistically, of the space?
Yeah, you know, also, just, you know, there is talk of expanding the program, kind of targeting sites, makes sense.
I mean, because we've got, yeah, you know, the last, it's been about three to six months since I've talked to the neighborhood group about it, but, you know, that was one of the things, like, they couldn't understand, because, you know, people are vandalizing the work that they've done, and if we had, they believe if there was somebody that was allowed to camp there, that there'd be some more ownership on that, and then it would also give opportunity for that sanitation, you know, full-time, as opposed to just during the season.
And regarding your concern about the matrix, that's why, I know, we really feel this interdepartmental coordination is important, because we're kind of getting people talking across departments now, and we're also bringing it to the community where these hotspots are, knowing, because it's not always the best solution, as was mentioned, that just to put up a no-parking sign, because there's traffic conditions, there are issues, there's enforcement issues with that. So, we are, you know, pursuing, or working with the community to really have that discussion, what the city feels is a good solution, what, you know, the neighbors feel are a good solution, trying to meet somewhere in the middle for a real workable solution for all parties involved.
Well, thank you for that, but I feel like there's a different level of, I can't think of the word, acceptance, or, it's kind of like downtown, people going, like, you know, before we put all our eggs in one basket about town-town, there was a different level of tolerance for behaviors downtown, and I think that in those areas, there's a different level of tolerance from the community for people who are homeless. And, you know, it isn't spread equally amongst the community, it's in these areas, and there's a different level of tolerance from, not only the community, but from law enforcement and from the city, and, you know, and so, I just feel, you know, I just get pinched a little bit more from my community, that, you know, why is it all in our neighborhood? You know, I could say that about social services, too, they're all on Highway 99, and we, you know, I don't want to go there. So, I'll stop right there, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Before I call on Betty, I just want to, I think Andrea's hit on a really important issue here. In our affordable housing policy, we make a point to try to disperse our response throughout the community, and we don't just wait for it to happen, we work on it happening. So, that would be a different attitude that we would take toward trying to find locations for camping, that makes it more evenly across the community, and do it proactively. The other thing about the Adopt a Park thing that I just want to wonder about and sort of put on your agenda is, because we've been wrestling with the Scobrick Pocket Park issue across from Tiny Tavern and all of that.
That's huge.
And for that, people were trying to get some sanitary accommodations in that area, too, and I'm just wondering if there isn't some kind of solution. They certainly don't have a parking space there, but Tiny's has a big parking lot behind it that's right across from the park, which is usually filled with people that you would not want to have there, and, but, in fact, if you had somebody there that was a, kind of had some responsibility for the park, it might help with that situation. So, just something to create... for the park, it might help with that situation. So, just something to creatively think about how that might help Tiny's, help the park, and help the neighborhood. Just something for you to think about. Betty?
Well, first, a comment. What we really need is shelters. We used to have what were called poor houses or poor farms, and I think we really need shelters rather than, rather than camping, and it should be estate, state-supported shelters. An awesome question, I'm wondering what happens, what do we do with those people that nobody wants around? Just, that's kind of a comment, too. But when people's cars are taken, their vehicles, whatever they are, how do they get them back?
They don't.
Do they have to pay a huge fine?
Oh, yeah. They're, when the cars are towed, they will have to pay a fine. Some, like the person I was referring to earlier, he receives a monthly stipend, I believe, Social Security, so he gets his vehicle out and continue, and was for a while continuing to violate. But for the most part, their vehicles are taken from them.
That's pretty horrible. I mean, if they're already poor, and they lose their vehicles, and then they owe hundreds of dollars, it puts them, it just, it's, I would just say impossible to get out of that situation then. And I was, another question, these are just rambling questions, but is it, just before the country fair in my part of town, I see a lot more street parking. Is there a lot more camping, street camping at that time of year?
Yeah, a lot of people are migrating here for those events. And if I could say to the earlier, those, well, that's why when Keith goes out, he gives, he tries to give them an opportunity, and I've talked to him before, and he tries to drive it home, that, look, you need to leave this area, or you could lose your camper, and things of that nature. So, they are giving ample opportunity to, hopefully, they'll comply and move at that point.
So, they can move to the next street.
They can.
It could, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
How many people get...
I'd just like to sort of turn that into a more positive moment and say that, and I think the chief could speak to this better than I could, but last week, they had a celebration of someone who found themselves being chronically in trouble in our community for a number of years, who, who made it with a lot of support out of that to, can you talk to that for just a moment, Chief, because I think it's an example of success.
Yeah, there was a gentleman who, for thirty years, was chronically inebriated and had over seven hundred entries in our local criminal justice system, was released from the jail after just barely surviving another intoxicated event in his life, and real, and bumped into one of our police officers and realized that if he didn't do something right away, he would die. And our officer helped him get housing that night, and this entire, you know, community of services stepped up to support him despite his very ugly behavior over the last thirty years. And he's now been sober for over a year and is a manager of a treatment facility, a small treatment facility.
I just want to use that as an example of why we see a lot of, a number of folks with very difficult lives, that there's, don't have to give up. I mean, there's always a chance that something's gonna happen that's gonna give somebody a new opportunity for life, and I think that's part of what the camping program is trying to do, is to give people a place to begin a journey to get, to get back and be part of society and succeed. And so, this is a, this guy, I think, felt very, as did all the folks who supported him, felt very proud that he'd been able to make a new life for himself, which is what we hopeful for, for everybody that finds himself in that situation. Any other comments tonight? Thank you very mu... Yes, George?
I just have a brief question. You mentioned earlier, it costs about a thousand dollars a year per site. That's per parking lot, right? Is that not each individual slot?
There is some variance depending on the size of facilities needed. If there's three cars, they might need a larger trash bin or two restrooms. So, that's an average. So, there is some variance there.
Per vehicle?
Yep. Per site, per site, yep.
That could be more than one vehicle.
Yes, it could be up to three on some sites.
Thank you.
And one example that we can, you can see any day down here is First Church of...
Dan Bryant's Church?
Dan Bryant's Church.
First Christian Church.
First Christian Church has three slots that they have been providing spots for campers for years and years and years there, and it's right, right in our downtown and in South Eugene. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.